Good evening, everybody. This is a meeting of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission being held virtually pursuant to the governor's executive orders which are currently set to expire, I believe, on April 19th. And hopefully, we will be able to continue being virtual after that. Our first, we have no postponements this evening, and our first item for the regular meeting is a discussion item 171 Hamilton Avenue, Hamilton LLC for an 830G application with six residential units at 171 Hamilton Avenue. With, who's presenting for the applicant? Would that be Mr. Cohen, perhaps?
I believe so, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Cohen, could you give us your hand? Oh, there, I see you. I gotcha. And Mr. Cohen, would you like anyone with you? Hello, Mr. Cohen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. All set. That sound is very good.
Well, that's good. I've been working on my little machine here. Evening all. Bruce Cohen, representing the applicant in this pre-application for 171 Hamilton LLC, had a property at that location on Hamilton Avenue in Greenwich. This is a pre-application as of the provisions of Section 7159b of the general statutes to get, to let you know a little bit of what we're heading for and to get input from the commission that would be non-binding on anybody. Pat, if we could start the images, I'll quickly run through the location and then the plan that we have. Thanks, Pat. The first photo is an aerial showing, outlined in red, the location at 171 Hamilton of the property that we're talking about. It's at the corner of View Street. It presently has located on it some older buildings. Pat, if you can take the next one, that shows what's there right now, which is an old barber shop and a two-family residence in the back. Pat, the next one just shows the front view of that. Pat, the next one shows the view around the corner from View Street, which shows a two-car garage and a shed in back of it. Pat, the next one is a view looking southwest on Hamilton Avenue in front of the location. The next one, Pat, shows the view across the street diagonally from 171. And the next one, Pat, shows a building under construction down the street, down Hamilton Avenue, at 56 Old Field Point Road. Pat, I think the next one shows another older multifamily building across that construction location. It's been around Greenwich since I can remember, and probably a lot longer. And then the next one, I think, will show the existing conditions of a survey of the property. Bridge View Streets on the top, Hamilton Avenue is on the left. The existing structures with no setback on the side or on the front is shown at the left-hand side, and then toward the rear are the two other structures that you saw, the garage and the shed. Pat, the next image shows what's planned in terms of the blue outline as a new four-story building with a proposal for retail on the ground level, and then three levels of apartments totaling six apartments, two of which would be affordable under the provisions of 8-30G. To the right of the, of the blue symbol are 11 new parking spaces, one of which is a handicapped space. And then we have a number of additional photos that, that I won't trouble you with, but should there be questions, we can refer to them. More photos of the surrounding area and of what we're proposing to build that, I believe, all, or most of which were in your package. So let me talk a little bit about the, the input that we would like to get from you. This is structured as an 8-30G, the concept being that it is a, a very acceptable location for an affordable development. We know that because the same developers have, have built very successful 8-30G development across the street at 180 Hamilton Avenue, got approval to build another one further down on Hamilton Avenue. Hamilton Avenue was, is an acceptable location from many points of view, including the fact that it is on the bus line, it has town water, town sewer, close to shopping in the immediate vicinity, and of course, the Hamilton Avenue School and St. Rock Church are both very close indeed. The concept here for the retail is to, in effect, break the project down into two pieces, a standalone, if you will, retail piece, which we'd like to develop in the ground floor because it's fitting with the neighborhood. It would add a retail presence in that area, and it does comply with all zoning requirements. And I say it's a standalone because if you extract that portion of the development, you get the balance of the, of the property, which is developed as 8-30G residential building. It's, it would be an apartment building that is served by elevator. There would be apartments on the second, third, and fourth floor. The fourth floor would have two apartments with balconies, and the apartments on the second and the third floor would be for two-bedroom apartments each. We have provided with, with our plans, some alternate ideas for the ground floor should the commission be applied to that direction. We, the first floor, the ground floor, could be developed for residential purposes or for part retail and part residential purposes. And I, I think our client would like to have the flexibility to do either. A little concerned about retail rental market at this time, right now, and whereas we know that the residential market is, is fairly active. That, that's kind of the, the application. We've gone as far as developing a parking and traffic study to determine that the 11 parking spaces that's planned onsite would be sufficient for the combined use. It certainly would provide sufficient parking spaces for the daytime retail use. And given the fact that it's supposed to have the shared use with the apartments, which is a evening use, the parking study that we have presented with our pre-application indicates that we have sufficient parking available for, for the combined use. And that, you know, in a nutshell, is our application, and we're very interested in, in comments.
So, Mr. Cohen, yesterday when we discussed it, nobody on the commission objected to the concept of retail use. We did discuss it since 830G doesn't specify whether or not one can, and is focused only on the residential, but nobody objected. We, we liked the idea, I believe, of having the retail so that you begin to create more retail continuity in that area of town. I drove it again this afternoon, and it's spotty. You know, it goes back and forth. You get some retail, and then it goes away, and then it comes back. So having additional retail continuity makes it more of a village. I understand, we understand, we all do, that the market may be soft. On the other hand, there may be some options for the storefront. So my take yesterday was that we were, we were accepting of the retail, that we didn't object to it, that we thought it would add something to the community. Second, I did wonder, you know that View Street is commonly known as not having it anywhere near enough parking, and if I, it's funny that we, I get emails about it. So I haven't recently, but I have in the past. So that is a concern. So I'm glad you did the parking study. Retail would be good. We'd rather have you, I believe, keep that. I don't know if anybody feels strongly about it. If you could have some additional parking on the ground floor while you were having retail, that would be good. Those are my overall comments. What about somebody else? Mr. Yeski?
Yeah, I, I was wondering, Mr. Cohen, or some, maybe the applicant, can just give us more information. When I look at the building, I, I know it's a kind of a rendering, but it's, it's modern. I happen to like modern, and I've seen this design-
Can you put up the rendering of the building?
What's that?
I just asked Pat to put up the rendering of the building so that everybody could see it.
I really like modern, and I've seen this design in many cities across the United States and overseas. But I guess where I've seen it is almost exclusively-
It's the visual. He wants the, the actual rendering.
The elevation, I guess, huh?
No, the, the colored, keep going, keep going. There.
No, no, there's one that's like more of a photo.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys. I'm trying to get to that image.
Well, keep talking, Dennis, and we'll watch this slideshow while you're talking.
Yeah, this is, this is a favorable comment. I mean, I like the, I like modern, but this is Chickahominy. And I'm wondering if you chose this particular style because you believe the neighborhood is like a transitional neighborhood. What I've seen in other cities is this kind of design is, fits into transition. You'll go down the block, and you'll see this, and then you'll see the other buildings next to it. It's an older area. But then you noted, you, you showed a picture of the construction site, and I also drove by it. And there's a couple other buildings that, you know, it's kind of transitioning from what was built in 100 years ago in many cases to what, what might be 50 years from now. Is that the idea behind this? This is like a transitional style, or am I missing something?
You know, I can't answer that question, Mr. Yeski, because I really have not been deeply involved in the design process. But I would tell you that I, I believe that our client is intending to do what, what they've done in the, in their past.
Your client has just raised his hand, so I guess he wants to help you out.
He always does.
So, go ahead, Mr. Pacora.
Good as Michael.
You need to unmute. You should be off set.
There he goes.
Yeah, okay. All right, there he is. Okay.
If you look at the rent, if you look at the photos of the holy side of the road, you'll notice that pretty much, I would say, four out of the seven buildings are residential buildings, in essence. And what I'm trying to do is, is build a, a building that's going to bring us to the next stage of society. And it seems that most younger people want to live in more modern buildings. The facade that we chose is just a facade. So it's just our thoughts. I mean, ARC will have comments, I'm sure, and I'm sure you guys have comments, but the facade could be changed to be pretty much whatever you want it to be, as long as the box stays the way it is.
That's, that's good. I mean, I, I wasn't suggesting going to ARC yet, but I, I kind of like it, except would you call this a transitional neighborhood, where people are going to keep building and long-term, you could see whatever the building ending up to be kind of fitting into a newer neighborhood and look?
Well, I, I personally don't think that this neighborhood is going to stay the way it is. I think 15, 20 years from now, it's going to be a more modern road. And if you look at every, if you look at every new building that's built in Chickahominy, it's a modern look.
Yep. No, I saw, I saw that. I saw that. Okay. I was just curious. You said it, though. You said, hey, we're open. Maybe this is too modern, maybe it isn't. I, I, again, I happen to like modern, but I'll be curious to see what you come back with. You're just looking for feedback, that's all.
Yeah, and Patrick, Patrick also has a new-
Oh, Pat. Oh, okay. I was like, I was screen sharing, and all of a sudden, it went away. Pat didn't, that took away my screen.
That's the newest rendering.
It reminds me of Greenwich Academy, the way that with the old campus, they put in the wood and stone building to, in keeping with the Connecticut landscaping and terrain.
I, I just have a stupid question. Back in the back where there's those teeny windows, what's in there?
Yeah, those are the bedrooms and the windows above bed walls.
Oh, okay. And then they have like a bigger window in, in the, in the rear facade of the build. Right, of course. Okay, got it. Okay. All right. The, and so if you did the retail, it, it would extend straight these three all the way back, right? That's what you're thinking?
Correct. And the center door in the front is the entrance to the secondary means of degress from the upper floors.
Um, when you apply, although Dennis wasn't sure, I, if you're, if, I would have you go to ARC first before you come back to us. Would that be okay, Katie, if they do that? Because I feel like-
Mrs. Alba, I would suggest that we should probably talk about the site plan and get the, the building kind of
Okay.
adjusted before we send it to ARC.
Okay. Victoria, you still have your hand up. Do you, would you like to say something else? All right. I'm Dave.
Yeah, I agree with Dennis. This type of architecture is consistent with similar neighborhoods around the country. My issue, I guess, is the lack of setbacks. I think that while the need for density is probably important, I don't think the neighborhood benefits from something that comes straight out to the sidewalk. I know the existing structure does, but it's quite small compared to the overall site. And I would greatly prefer something that did step back. Second, I don't think it's really our purview, or certain, I don't feel it's mine to sort of tell the developer, he has to have retail. I think in a time of economic uncertainty today, that that should be his prerogative.
I think-
And that we should focus on, you know, the affordable income aspect of it.
We would prefer it, I believe, but I, you're, it's good to know. So does anybody else feel strongly that we should ask for it? I think I'm comfortable with leaving it up to the developer.
I think we should leave it up to the developer.
I think we can leave it up to the developer, but he knows how we feel about it.
Yeah.
I have a question. If they-
One question for, for Mr. Hardman. I'm sorry, just hold on just a second, Mr. Lo. Mr. Hardman, if the developer did a greater setback, he might want another story. Well, how would you respond to that? I'm just asking.
Not, not favorably. I, I think that, you know, we have spent an extensive amount of time. I realize it's an 830G application, and I think Mr. Pacora is well-versed in his kind of rights or ability under 830G, but I, I do think, and I'll defer to Nick Mackey on the value of setbacks versus height at this location.
Can I respond to that?
Oh, sure. Now, I'd be very interested.
Go right ahead, Mr. Pacora.
All right. So every building on that whole east side is on the property line, except for the hospital's auxiliary building, which is about, I would say, five feet from the property line, including our building is right on the property building. And what we're proposing to do is to step it back five feet from the property line. Pretty much every building on the east side is on the property line as well. So I'm actually further back than any other building on our side of the road, except for one of the seven buildings, and I think only one of the building, I'm sorry, two of the buildings on the east side, west side, are set back about five feet. So I'm consistent with the neighborhood. It just may look- Okay.
Okay. Ms. DeLuca?
Hi. I'm curious if you guys have had a conversation with the sewer department yet? As I suspect that might be your biggest hurdle.
Well, we, we've had many conversations with the sewer department based on the 10 units across the street and the 15 units down the road. So we're pretty versed as to what it can handle, in our opinion. Obviously, we would have to go to the sewer department with our plan. Tony DeAndrea has, you know, knows exactly what's in the road and what's not. So we're, we're comfortable with the project so far.
And then how many, how many units are on the property existing?
Currently?
Yes.
Two, two apartments, one two-bedroom, one three-bedroom, and a three-chair barber shop that's been kind of vacant for eight years.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of cute, the barber shop. Does anybody else have any comment, or can we take a quick look, see with the public?
Mr. Cohen, I just want to make sure I understand. The proposal that we're looking at there is, is proposing a 1.41 FAR?
Yes.
And the underlying, the LVR2 is .5, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the underlying for height is two and a half stories, and we're looking at four, correct? And the minimum front yard for the LVR2 is 10 feet, and we're getting five feet?
Is that what the rendering shows now, Mr. Pacora, or is, or you're saying you would move it back five?
No, it is currently five.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to show that.
Not, not the front yard. The front yard is on the line.
No, it's zero in the front.
No, it's, it's five feet from the property line. The proposed building, the proposed building is five feet from the property line. Yeah, but the existing building is-
The existing is zero, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
Existing is zero. And that, yep. Okay. Anything else, you guys?
Mr. Pacora, if you return, I think actually what I'd like to really see as well is building sections through both, both directions through the building, and site sections through the building in both directions as well. Because I guess it slopes up towards the rear of the building, and I want to get a sense of how it relates to Hamilton Avenue, View Street.
I think, I, I think, I think Patrick has the site plan.
A site section, please. I saw the elevations. I wanted a section through the building and the site. I want to get a kind of sense of how this fits to the slope that's out there.
I think, yeah, that's fine.
It's weird, because, okay, with that, does anybody from the public wish to comment? Please raise your virtual hand. Virtual hand from the public. One virtual hand coming up. And Mr., I might mess this up. Radzowski?
Hi, this is Walter Radzowski. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Successfully. Thank you. Just, just a quick comment. My name is Walter Radzowski. I live in Byram, and I'm a member of the Byram Neighborhood Association. I'm also a member of the Byram Neighborhood Association's Land Use Committee, which has recently been reactivated and is headed by Al Shahadi. Regarding the pre-application at 171 Hamilton Avenue, the proposed development is out of scope for our neighborhood association, but we wanted to voice our, our general sort of concern and attention regarding 830G applications that pursue larger-scale developments that might otherwise be allowed, considering local planning and zoning rules. And I'm sure that, that the development at 171 Hamilton has many merits, but it, it could be interpreted as an example of how developments pursuing, pursued through 830G aren't necessarily helping to reduce exclusionary zoning, and perhaps even concentrating more affordable housing in our already dense and socially, socio-economically diverse neighborhoods. So we just wanted to voice that point, and we support the town's efforts to continue to look at this issue.
Thank you very much for your comments. We actually, if I could guide you to some super interesting information, the Greenwich United Way has just released its needs study for the town, and it has income levels by neighborhood and racial composition by area of town as well. It's quite interesting because you're, you're right that greater diversity in Greenwich would move, should, we should move the development east. Mr. Pacora's had the opportunity here, but if there's a way that we could move it east, you would be absolutely right, sir. Is there anything else?
No, that's all. Thanks for the opportunity to make that comment.
Thank you very much for speaking. Baron Snyder, if you would, please go ahead. You'll need to unmute. And I'm assuming you're Baron Snyder, because you're the only Baron I know. There you go. You're all set.
Oh, hi. I didn't, I didn't realize you were talking to me. I just, I just wanted to say, honestly, if Mr. Pacora is not dead-set on, on a particular style and just wants a certain amount of units up, I hate to see Chickahominy disappear and go ultra-modern. The design is very nice, actually. I agree with the other commissioners who, who like the design. I'm sorry, I don't have my video working either.
No, that's okay.
But it looks great in Denver. You know, it looks great out in California. I don't think it looks right in Chickahominy. And if you're going to add to the density in Chickahominy, which is already so dense, if I lived there in one of those cute little houses, I would be really unhappy to see that go up like that. So as much as I think it's a lovely design, I think it's really out of place. And, and the other thing is, I don't think anybody realizes that these meetings are happening via Zoom during the day. So there's probably not, I don't know. I wonder how much public comment you get because I just- Do you? That's good. That's great.
More than ever before.
Really? Oh, good. That's wonderful.
Yeah, we have 55 people in the audience right now.
Oh, that's wonderful. Okay.
That was only when, that was only for things like Sandbridge in the old days.
Yeah, exactly. Great. Well, that's all I wanted to say. I don't want to take up a lot of-
Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. I, is there anybody else in the public who wishes to speak? I'm no architect, so I didn't want to, as you all know, but I didn't want to comment on the style, Mr. Pacora. But as I drove through again this afternoon, I just looked at all the styles. I see your point that it's a mixed style. Your Office Building, Black Rock Gallery, 50 Spring Street, there's some of the newer buildings that stand out nicely in the neighborhood. But on the other hand, the neighborhood historically has a lot of stucco as well. But on the other hand, the neighborhood historically has a lot of stucco as well. There's a combination of, you know, stucco facade and there's a lot of shingle. That's, and your building, as you pointed out, there's, I don't think it has any setback, right, Your Office Building? And that's historically that way, that your building's always been like that, your, the Picor Office Building.
Yeah, we're right on the property line.
You're right on the property. And that's the way it's always been. And then I don't think black, it's called Black Rock Gallery, right? I don't think they have any setback. And again, all of those are sort of a shingle siding. So it's really, I would say to you, if, if what makes the neighborhood comfortable may be the most important thing you can do here is whatever the neighborhood is accepting of and what they feel is positive for Byram Chickahominy. But, you know, if you feel that you get a warm reception to it. And with that, I don't think anybody's got any other comment. If you would come back to us with site plan, I haven't heard any major concerns. I know you're not going to be able to get much landscaping in for me. I saw that. But I see the issues. Maybe you could just tear out the sidewalk when DPW is not looking and plant grass.
I don't know if people feel, I'm just kind of throwing this out there. This might be a terrible idea. But does, does anybody like those buildings where the, where there's like landscaping on the building, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it hasn't done super well, the vertical, the vertical, I forget what they're called, green building, vertical something. There's a beautiful one in Milan. You know, John Ferrari tried to do that a couple of times with green walls.
Yeah.
In Greenwich.
It doesn't work in this, in this area.
They use a lot of water.
Have a lot of, he didn't have a lot of.
It works, it works in Florida.
And he ended up doing plastic walls, which kind of defeats the purpose. So.
Right.
Just is a tough sell. Now, when you don't want it, the ivy grows insanely on your buildings. But if you try to make a green wall, I don't know, maybe there's something that prospers, but I haven't seen it. I mean, there was further down on Railroad, there was a building that was always covered with ivy and that prospered. Oh, Vin DiMarco is here. And then I think we need to move on because we're already half an hour into the meeting. Mr. DiMarco, you go ahead. You can talk. I bet he's going to ask me for. Mr. DiMarco.
Oh, there we go. Okay, you got me now?
Yep, we got you now.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Maybe if it was grapevines growing on the walls, it would be good for Chickahominy. I mean, it would fit in. I'm joking, obviously. But I, I'm a little bit disturbed that, that, you know, Baron Snyder, I guess her name is.
Yes.
Her, her comment about not getting a lot of feedback or getting a lot of people speaking about it in an early meeting like this. Maybe you're right that there's a lot of people viewing, but I don't know what the hesitation is for people who are viewing that, that probably don't like the design, as a few people have expressed now. Because, I mean, the reaction on Facebook was, was pretty incredible.
Oh, okay, there's a reaction on Facebook. Well, we'll take a look at it.
I don't know if you're getting a representative. You know, yeah, feedback, the feedback doesn't seem to be what, what I saw anyway on, on Facebook about that. So.
Is that, is that on the Byram?
But it's too bad. Well, it's both, no, it was under the Chickahominy page. The moderator that put it on the Chickahominy and, and also on the Greenwich Free Press page. She, she posted the article there. And it was a lot of, lot of feedback, negative feedback towards the design. It would be too bad if people don't speak up now and the design, you know, moves along. People may have some, some great ideas and, and they're not saying so, and I wish they would. So I mean, I grew, I grew up in Chickahominy. And I, I don't particularly care for that design in Chickahominy either. I think, I think it fits what Ferrari is going to build down in the parking lot next to, you know, five hundred or whatever it is, five, you know, down the hill. That modern design seems to fit. The Picors did such a great job with the two, with the architecture for the, of the two eight thirty Gs that they, that they just done. And I'm disappointed to see that it's, that it's so modern there. So that's just my opinion and I, but I think there's an awful lot of people that, that feel the same way and I wish they would speak up.
Well, what we'll do is maybe the people who are on the Chickahominy page are different, but Mr. Picor can probably find it and take a look at what the comments are. And we'll make sure we do outreach before it comes forward for a public hearing.
Yeah, I had to take medication when I was reading it. So it was quite depressing.
You are aware of it. Okay.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thanks so much.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much.
I make one comment about
Yeah.
the design. And I would say that it's very fussy and, and, and Chickahominy has very simple, straightforward designs for housing. There's, they're very simple, not terribly articulated. And this design really challenges that and becomes much more object oriented and much more of a feature. And I would suggest that the, the design be quieted down. And you look toward other beautiful modern sleek buildings that are relatively small like this one. And how, how simple and straightforward they can be without the kind of color dodging that, that's going on here. It could be much simpler and it would blend in more and people would enjoy the building more. Because you don't have to create a building that is drastically different for it to be enjoyed.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Levy. With that, we'll see you when you come back. Mr. Picor.
You will. We appreciate the comments. Thank you.
And it turns out that you have to belong to the Chickahominy page, so I just asked to join it. So I will be able to send medication to Mr. Picor in a little while.
You can go on the Facebook app and go into, if you live in Greenwich, it's there.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm, I'm good. I asked to join Chickahominy. Maybe someone will let me in. Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. Our next application is Greenwich Capital Properties Group LLC for, at, on Mason Street, I'm just going to say, for a pre-app review for a six one ten application. Having trouble. Oh, there he goes. Okay. And Vin, I still have Vin here. All right. Okay, and for the applicant is JP Gagné. And that's going to be, is it just JP? Is Stuart Lox also, oh, from Perkins Eastman?
Can you hear me?
Yep, I've got you and I'm bringing up Stuart Lox.
Yes. And I have a few others that will be joining me.
Okay. Um, could you ask them to raise their hands?
Can you raise your hand, Richard and Stuart?
Here, thank you.
No, I got Stuart. I'm waiting for Mr. Morgan out. There he is. All righty. No cursing. Okay, I think, okay, so we've got Richard Morgan out and we've got Stuart Lox. All right, anybody else, Mr. Gagné?
I believe that's all.
Okay.
Although I have other members that will be listening.
Okay, if you would kindly proceed.
And Madam Chair, I, I have a presentation. If I could be allowed to share my screen?
Provided that to the question already ahead of the meeting?
Some sheets were included in what we submitted previously. I have several other additional ones.
If, I, I would just ask that we get a copy of it. We need, we need it for the record. So.
Can you, can you email it to Patrick right now?
I think for time's sake, if we could let him.
Oh, I figured he could multitask. Okay. You've already made him, oh, no, I'm working on it, right?
No, we have to make him a co-host. Sorry, Madam Chair.
But if you could, if you could send it to us, this is before the end of the meeting, that would be great.
Yeah, as soon as you can, because it's tricky for us.
Yeah.
Yep, no, I understand.
Stuart, I can provide you with their email information.
If you would, yeah, because it's tricky for us for information to be presented and not have it in the public record.
Understood.
Okay, all right, Mr. Lox, if you would go ahead. I think Patrick made you a co-host.
Okay.
Which, by the way, if we're letting Mr. Lox do it, this has been a long term request of the ARC that they have their, their presenters.
But it's only because it's a pre-app.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty, okay, Mr. Lox.
Let's see, it's telling me you're disabled.
Let me begin for a second, if I may, before we start with the presentation. First of all, I want to say hello to everyone, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Director of Planning Staff and of course, interested members of the audience. My name is John Pierre Gagné, host. Most of you know me by JP, Principal of Greenwich Capital Properties Group Brokers and Developers. Madam Chair, thank you for this opportunity to appear before you in support of our pre-application review to redevelop an existing legal non-conforming land use car dealership to a residential commercial mixed land use consistent with Section six dash one ten dwelling units permitted in a business zone. On behalf of Orchard Place Associates and Bruce Park Associates, owners of the property that include the Delia and the Margano families. Appearing with me is Representative Mr. Richard Margano, and he will say a few words in a moment. As part of our application, Rick and I have assembled and picked a highly qualified group of experts, including the architect Perkins and Eastman. And appearing tonight, of course, is Bradford Perkins and Stuart Lax, land use planning, Dimney Tong Tralby and President Andrew Tong and Matthew Steinberg, land use attorneys, Hickley Allen, headed by Timothy Hollister and civil engineers, Mr. Anthony DeAndrea. And of course, last but not least, the traffic engineer, Hodesty and Hanover, Michael Galanti and Gregory Del Rio. I wish I had that name. It's a great name. Rick, if you would say a few words, please, and then we'll pick up from there and then we'll move on to the actual presentation. And I think, Madam Chairman, for allows this, this time.
Certainly. Thank you for this opportunity. I am Richard Marganat. I'm the manager of the two limited liability companies, which are the applicant Orchard Place Associate. Let's see, it's in Bruce Park Associates LLC. These two LLCs are my aunts and my mom. And the properties have been owned by our family since the nineteen thirties and the nineteen forties. My grandma, my grandmother Anna Delia or Anna Healy wanted six kids and my grandfather John Delia assembled them over time and they started a Firestone dealership and they sold gas. During the war, they opened their shop in nineteen forty seven, had Studebaker, Pontiac and a parade of other dealerships. And then we caught on to Honda in the seventies and, and we turned that off. We turned that over to a, an independent to run and we've had the property since. And the past, the future, the, the past has been great to us. And as we transition into the future, I'm looking for opportunities, not only for my group, but trying to see if we can fit something in that would benefit the town. And I see a housing opportunity here and that's what this application is all about. We've had a steady hand in management for all of these years. We've had the same tenant essentially now for this, for the past twenty five years. And I, I see a way to transition this into the future to meld with the needs of the, the center business district, the, the avenue, and perhaps develop a, a very pedestrian friendly development, including some housing, some retail and some workforce housing, however we end up categorizing it. I know we're in the middle of a one ten G discussion and there's all sorts of other proposals out there. But I want to make this fit and see if we can get an optimum result for everybody. There is a little bit of urgency in the sense that Honda also is moving into the future and their timetable is not exactly precise. But I have an opportunity to, to use this time now to come up with a future plan of our own. And so with that, because there's a lot of material and we have many other people that might want to speak. JP, I'm going to turn it back to you and you can introduce the group.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate that.
Just a second, Mr. Gagné, before you start, I just, I wanted to make sure that you had been told by staff that this is not meant to be a full blown presentation that we anticipate usually that the discussion will be about twenty minutes in total. And it's just to give us an idea of what the, that you're, you're here for the basic broad brush, major issues that the application has, not for a detailed presentation. I just wanted to say that because we, we would otherwise have a very long agenda tonight. And Katie, you did communicate that, right?
Well, yeah, we talked about just having some key issues that they would like to discuss with you and using this opportunity to, to do that and to just add an ideas to the direction that the commission might go should an application be filed.
Want to make sure you're, you're not planning on an hour or something. We normally shoot for the pre-apps to be twenty minutes.
Sure, we're not planning on an hour, but we just.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gagné.
Yes, I, I appreciate your comments and certainly welcome those. And we will get it right into the presentation. What we want to focus on tonight primarily is the bulk mass and height of the dimensional standards of the ordinance. And with that, we will proceed then to, to give the presentation as quickly as we can.
Thank you very much. And I did not mean to offend, but we have to manage the timeline.
I appreciate your comments, madam, and we will be respectful of the time limitations. In front of you is the aerial photograph that identifies the property. It's about one point four three acres. It's divided by Mason Street and on the east is about forty eight thousand square feet, just over one acre. To the west are two parcels, one that continues from Mason Street to Greenwich Avenue and that's about five thousand five hundred square feet. And then the second is where the Honda service dealership exists and that's about ten thousand square feet. Collectively, about one point four three acres on two sides of the street. The unique aspects of the property, if you can get to the next slide, Stuart, I would appreciate it. I assume, Stuart, you're running the presentation for me? Okay.
I just emailed the PDF to Ms. DeLuca.
Thank you. This view, you all know, is very familiar to most people, is looking north. On the right side is the easterly side of the property occupied by Honda's both servicing sales. Building to the left, on the westerly side is a service department and a sales department, which you can see is occupying quite a bit of an area where it's perhaps might be considered a secondary gateway entrance to Greenwich if you get off exit three and you travel along Railroad Avenue and you make a right on, on Bruce Park Street and a left on Mason Street. This is what you enter into Greenwich and the view that you have. Next slide. The existing buildings are highlighted in color. And you can see to the west, there are the two buildings. It essentially is really one building. Oddly enough, when the buildings were constructed back in nineteen twenty six and later, they were connected internally to service both the uses of retail and of course, service for an auto body and auto car service dealership. To the eastern side, you have two buildings and a significant amount of parking. The parking is at grade and there's an elevated ramp that allows cars to rise up to the top elevation of about twenty feet above grade. And there's roughly about seventy four parking spaces on the site existing today. It's a very active site. There's a tremendous amount of activity back and forth between the service and the repair and sales. And that's ongoing six days a week, Monday through Saturday. The zoning category in the area is CGB and CGBR, which is Greenwich Avenue and of course Mason Street. So it's illustrating how the property is divided between the two zones. Essentially, the CGBG, our zone is the four oh five Greenwich Avenue that extends to. our zone is the 405 Greenwich Avenue that extends to from property line to property line. I'm going to let Stuart describe the site plan and the building elevations.
Thank you, Mr. Gagnier, Madam Chair, members of the board, the Commission. We have designed the building after studying the site. We elected for this to look at putting all of the residential units on the eastern, the larger eastern portion of the site, as well as what, what you don't necessarily, might not pick up immediately from this, is that the three stories of residential are built over a large parking deck at the ground floor. The rear of the, at the rear of the property, the parking deck is covered to completely conceal the parking and provide for a landscape terrace for the, for the residents of the building. We designed the building overall. It's got the four masses, you know, four separate pieces with the idea to break the scale down to be in similar in scale and cut to the, to the contextual other buildings in the area. We are extending landscaping out to the street. We have set the building back 10 feet, again, to provide some landscaping as a, as a buffer between the building and the sidewalk and the street. There are garage entrances at the north and south end of the property.
Um, excuse me just a second, Mr. Lax. I've got two people with their hands up on the, Katie and one of the commissioners. Katie, will you, or I think actually Dennis was first. Dennis, do you want to?
No, I fixed it. I couldn't hear the first speaker. I mean, and I jammed up my volume. I was trying to get a hold of you.
Oh, okay.
What, just quickly, so are you blasting out that rock in the back then in order to do that? I'm not, I'm not, I'm not understanding how that works in the back.
We have not done geotechnical studies yet, but we think we'll have to cut away some of the rock to fit the parking up against. The parking does not extend all the way to the setback line we're showing.
So, so that would, that's, that's supposed to be some sort of like green platform over a parking area. Is that, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, yeah, because that's, that's a pretty heavy-duty rock back there.
Uh, we are aware if you go, if I can go back to the, the aerial, I mean, there is already this.
Oh, I see.
This portion, so.
So it's, okay, I guess, so that all those trees would come out, basically.
Yes, this, this would come out, and we'd be using this area for parking.
Because that's our, that's an elevated platform already, actually, right there, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm getting, I'm seeing it now. Okay, and then the, 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 those trees, though, that's ground, obviously.
That's ground that, that slopes down, and we'll be using a, a part of that for the parking.
Got it. Okay, sorry.
Mr. Lox, could, actually, can you hold it right there at the slide you just had with the?
Yep.
Yeah. So you have underground parking towards the streetscape, and you have underground parking that extends close to the rear property line.
Yes.
So you really don't know, we're not, we don't know what's happening underneath that, that, those heavy grade lines there. It could be soil, it could be rock. We just don't know what it is yet.
Correct.
Okay, and then the upper area where you have the existing parking, that, a good portion of that's going to be removed for your new parking?
Yes.
Okay, and we don't know what's under that at the moment either?
We do not.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And so the blasting is all, I don't know why I'm moving my cursor, so, okay, so the blasting is on that, on that, on that cliff wall, if you will.
Um, yeah, we do not anticipate, first of all, we, we don't know yet what level the rock is at and how much. We, we're not necessarily sure if it would be blasting or whether or not it could be just scraped away.
Looking at it, yeah, okay, looking at the, at the, at the view from Bruce Park Ave.
Mm-hmm.
Over the weekend, it seemed like you're going to have rock face.
That shot. There, there will be some.
You don't have that shot in your slides, but, okay, go ahead. So there was some concern, obviously. We're concerned about blasting. Go ahead, because I don't think that's the most major issue we've got.
Yep. Um, and really, you know, finishing with, and this is not, I, I want to emphasize, this is not a final design, but this is along the lines of the style of architecture that we're contemplating. Something that is, you know, uses a traditional vernacular, but not, is not trying to recreate at the same time a building that might have existed hundreds of years ago, but to use, use that vernacular, use traditional materials in a slightly more modern way, but still embracing a residential character and feel and scale to fit in with the context of that portion of the downtown. And, and that really, I'll hand it back to JP to go further. It's really just to give you a flavor of what, of what we're looking at for the building.
And Mr. Gagnier, several people were actually struggling to hear you the first time. I don't know if you're far from your mic. I think everybody turned up their volume, but if, just to tell you, okay, go ahead, Mr. Gagnier.
Okay, can you hear me better this time?
I, I can, yes.
Okay, good. All right. Well, that's essentially our presentation, and I want to turn it back to the Commission to.
Thank you.
Tell us what your thoughts and comments are. As I mentioned earlier on, we, we are very interested in raising the red flags, if you have any.
And you're, I, the, the first question I would ask you right now is, you're assuming an FAR of about 1.0 here is what's in your write-up?
Yeah, we're approximately 1.0 and perhaps slightly more than that.
Okay, so based on that, Peter Lowe, you have your hand up. Please go ahead.
Yes, just to get a, you just addressed it, sort of, I think, but I'm not clear about the anticipated depth distance that this development will extend back into the existing trees and ledge and rock and, and the extent of that removal in terms of the, if you're, how much of that has to be removed?
Stuart, okay, let me just point out a few things. As, as part of our efforts to create really a, a site plan that can accommodate not only the, the amount of dwelling units that we're planning, but also for the parking needs. I, I heard earlier that it might have been, they mentioned it was an underground parking. This is not underground parking. This is, is really at-grade parking. And in order to go underground, as you can see from this terrain interpretation, it would be difficult to go underground.
Well, I'm sorry.
Way because of the rock and the depth of that rock.
But, Mr. Gagnier, we were assuming the underground parking was at 294.
Oh, yeah, yes, the underground parking proposed is at 294, but not on the easterly side of the park.
Right, and at 294, do you know that, whether or not you have the same type of terrain?
We don't, because it's already excavated. There is a basement under the existing building.
Okay, all right. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hardman.
Well, I, I'm not sure I got an answer to the.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Mr. Lowe, I'm sorry.
If I could get an answer of how far back into the existing rock ledge, tree scape, et cetera?
It, it would be about 130 feet from the property line.
Okay, so again, how much in terms of feet are you proposing to remove of the existing substance here, be it rock, trees, et cetera?
130 feet is approximately this line that I'm indicating with the, you know, I do not have a square footage or cubic footage calculation of how much that is at this point.
Mr. Mr. Lox, can you go back to the, to your landscape plan?
Yes, sir.
Uh, on that land, approximately, where is the, the back wall or the east wall of the garage underneath?
Uh, it, it's about at, at this point in the upper, upper half, and then it sort of steps back based on the parking, layout of the parking spaces to follow somewhat stepping the, this part of the property line. This, this pack of the setback line, I should say.
Okay, so the, the garage underneath the building at, at grade extends beyond the building itself towards the eastern property line.
Yes.
Do you have a floor plan of the garage?
Uh, not in a format suitable to present at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mr. Lowe, I think that may have answered your question. Is that the garage goes past the building towards the eastern property line?
They, they said that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a clear picture. That's okay. Let's, let's go on.
Okay. Peter, I think.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Dennis, if you would unmute. I just muted you because I thought you were talking to somebody else. Go ahead. No, Dennis, you need to unmute?
I, I did, I did. Takes some time, just like you take. Peter, I think what they're saying is that green area on the right, underneath that is going to be parking. They're going to, it, it, there, it, there's going to be a parking there.
Yes.
They're often saying that the first floor, the grade, where the dealership is now, that grade is also going to be parking. It's kind of like the first floor before you get to the, it's the ground floor, to use Margarita's term, I think. But I had a separate question, Margarita, whenever I get a chance.
No, go ahead.
Um, you know, I, I get it. I see the building. How high up are you proposing? Are you going to be above the existing level of the cliff right now?
No.
So.
We.
So the roof line will be below the existing cliff?
Peak of the, the peak of our building, we, we believe is going to be less than that, yeah, the cliff line.
Okay, let me make a suggestion again. This is meant to give you feedback.
Yeah.
We did a project, a 6110 project in Koskow. It's 100 East Putnam. The developer was able to provide us with tremendous visuals showing what they were proposing in the building, but they put it in the context of the neighborhood. I think they took an aerial, I'm not sure, but they basically overlaid it through whatever Photoshop, and I think the architect did it. It would be really helpful, because what you're going to do is you're coming back to ask us for an FAR 1.0, you got to park across the street, you got an entrance to Greenwich Avenue, but this, the, the building looks clearly large. On the other hand, you have this rock ledge, just like Koskow had a rock ledge. As it turned out, the building was not as big as perhaps one might think it was going to be. It kind of was hidden by the rock ledge, if you know what I mean. So I think you would really benefit from being able to put visuals together, not renderings where it's a certain angle, but what they did was actually a real photo, and then imposed on the photo, your design.
Inserted the, the proposed building into the photo, switch or something.
Correct, and.
Understood.
I'll just, I'll just speak for myself. That was tremendously helpful, because we had a large building next to it, and we had a rock cliff. You've got a large building with a rock cliff, and I noticed, I, I, I went by your site a couple times in the last couple days, that there are bigger buildings out off on Railroad or whatever that is.
Yeah.
There's a couple other buildings. So on the first blush, it's a huge building. On the other hand, you look at the site and say, oh, it might fit. So anything you can help us with on the visual, and I'm just suggesting one from the Koskow project, was very, very helpful.
That's good to know. Yes. That's something I think we can put together.
Uh, if, if I may.
Um, Mr. Hardman has his hand up, if you don't mind, Mr. Gagnier.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't know whether I'm missing something, but I don't understand the FAR request here. This seems, uh, anything over one is greatly out of context with our historic experience, and I, I, there's going to be a lot of discussion about that, so just enter that in the record as an objection.
Hello?
Everything. Everything.
Couldn't hear you, Margarita.
Yep, I got it. I was muting, I was, everything we've discussed regarding the revisions to 6110 is on the basis of a 0.75 FAR in this zone. Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gagnier, would you go ahead? You were going to make a comment.
No, but I, I'd also say in the historic context, getting, you know, the discussions are underway. I, I don't know what precedent would be for the commission to consider something of this FAR.
Katie, what did you get?
Not, not for discussion. I just want to register that, which is the purpose of this meeting.
Katie, you did a calculation for what the average, what it seemed like the FAR was kind of generally in the, in the CGB. Uh, do you recall what it was? I have an idea. It was around 0.7.
Um, yeah, let me get you those exact numbers. I did, I've actually shared this with the applicants, so they're, they're aware of it, but let me find that again.
So the existing, the built, the as-built in the area is, is consistent with where we're going with the 6110 right now. Mr. Gagnier, I'm sorry, I cut you off before while Katie's looking that up, if you want to go ahead.
Well, I just was going to comment on the prior comment about the garage and the way it's tucked into the hillside. So essentially, what, what the, the viewer will see is the building is tucked into the hillside, and it rises 15 feet from grade. So essentially, it will look, and if you notice from the topo, the rock ledge wraps around Bruce Park Street. So when the parking is tucked into the hillside, you won't see the parking so much. You'll see the rock ledge will remain that corner. So the effect, the visual effect will be softened as if the rock ledge had not been removed. So i- i- in addition to that, on top of the garage is a landscape feature. It will be gardens and plantings and benches and outdoor space that will become available for people to use, for the people that live within the building to use. It won't be public, but it will be private. But the people that are living above off of Ridge Street will be looking down on top of a landscape canopy, as, if you will, as opposed to a number of cars that are currently parked there now in a car dealership. So the visual will be improved through our efforts.
JP, can you give us an idea of what, what the height of this landscape deck is versus the, the, the property, the, the height of whatever the elevation is at the property line? Because this is going to be well below. I don't know if it's 15 feet, if, if the property line elevation is 15 feet above or, or what it is. So just give it, can you give us an idea?
Peter, are you asking the property line in the front or the rear property line?
In the rear, yeah.
Okay, the, the real, the front of, of elevation on Mason Street is roughly 14 feet at the center of the site. It, as you go back easterly towards the eastern property line, it rises to 80 feet, 80, 81, 82 feet. So people's backyards at Ridge Street, they walked out their backyard would be about 80 feet above sea level. And our garage will rise to about 50 feet, 55 feet. So take 40 plus 12 plus 3, we're at 55 feet, and then the building from that location would rise up above that about 30.
So, but, yeah. So you're, you're, you're building a big swimming pool that people are going to be circulating on the bottom of this pool, and there's no water in it. Just the, some greenscape. So I thought maybe you should think about how that looks and, you know, how, how do you make that something that's, that's desirable, because I'm just worried that the, that it's going to be, you have a wall on, the significant walls on either side, and so it, you're not going to get much sunlight but for the middle of the day, and the question is, how does, how do you make that desirable? Maybe another strategy would be to, to say, well, maybe I don't want that space in, in that situation. Maybe I need to put the space somewhere else. Uh, like, like you, you have some space in front of Bruce Park Avenue. Maybe you want to create more space there, and that becomes a more, a, a nicer space that you could use. But, so I would say that there's something about just the, 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 just looking at the elevation of this deck versus the walls around it, which don't seem that comfortable to me. And I think, you know, the, it's a long, fairly. And I think uh, you know, the the it's a long, fairly narrow space. So I was curious if you had thought about that or you have any other comments.
Well, uh, keep in mind that uh, the way that the rock ledge comes down, what we're doing is peeling back the rock ledge and tucking it into the grade itself. So on the north side, that grade rises up from forty or forty-two, let's say, up to eighty feet above sea. So that is very similar to what occurs on the easterly property line. And then again, on Bruce Park Avenue, the same thing occurs. The rock ledge quickly drops down. So if I understand you correctly, uh, the pool that you described already exists now under the existing conditions. What we're doing is just carving out within that U shape, if you will, between the north property line, the easterly property line and the southerly property line to tuck the parking garage deck into it. So and then adding landscaping as opposed to cars and.
Yes, yes. But I, what I'm saying is that the that landscaping, which is uh, instead of it being forty feet below the top bridge, is only going to be thirty or twenty-five feet below the top bridge.
Right.
And this space, and then you have the building sandwich, your sandwich between the the facade of the building, which is uh, is it uh, two and a half stories back there? I can't, you know, uh, but um, and then you have the other rock uh uh, ledge face uh, on the other side. That's quite a hole you're in. Um, and so I don't know, just thinking about it, I don't know how comfortable I would be being in that space. Um, having two significant walls. Um, one, a- and and the attenuation of of that space too, it uh, could be a kind of an optical issue as well. So um, I just thought that uh, I would mention that and see if you might uh, uh, think about that. And that it may not be as as uh, comfortable a a a space to uh, uh, enjoy and gather outside. And if you maybe thought of a different way of tackling an open space.
Peter.
It's like you have at the, on the other parcel on the other side, which is the open park and it's open to the street. And then it's, it has plenty of light and air um, around it.
Peter, your points are well taken. We'll make a note of that and and explore options that that might satisfy some of your comments. And I do understand your thoughts, uh, and perhaps one alternative is to break down the building uh, scale to perhaps permit visual points of visual uh vantage points from the rear to the front or the side.
Uh, Madam Chair, on the question you had asked about the massing, since I'm just going to segue from what you're saying, uh, Mr. Gagne, but the um, the study was in the CGB zone and there is a hundred and seventy-eight buildings on a hundred and sixty-five properties. And of those, um, sixty-two were between a point three and a point five FAR. Forty were between a point five and a point seven five and forty-three exceeded the point seven five. Um, so effectively, a hundred and four out of the hundred and six properties were point seven five or below. Uh, but as you had noted, the where the direction that it appears the commission's going is with the point seven five with the um moderate income regulations, which this, which this applicant um, has expressed a desire to submit this proposal under. So um, to all these comments that are being made, uh, I think the key thing is that the building um, will presumably have to be reduced to the point seven five. We are looking to get a regulation out um, in the next couple of weeks. So that will obviously give you better direction at that point. I know you've been at our, at our meetings and you've been following those happenings. Um, but uh, one of the things that commission might want to comment on was mentioned at the briefing yesterday is the park. And um, as you know, the 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 one across the street, I mean, um, there's parking underneath the park. So perhaps um, that might get you to the point nine if the regulation goes, goes in that direction. Um, and is the commission okay with a park over a parking lot? There was some concern yesterday. Just to kind of um, give the, give the applicant some guidance here.
I'm.
I, if I might. Um, Dennis has his hand up and then you go, Mr. Barilak.
Thank you.
Yeah, picking, picking up on Katie's comment, Katie. Um, when I first looked at this, I thought what they were saying is they knew that one point O was far in excess of what we were talking. But then the park has no bill, it has a building on it right now, but they're going to rip it down and make it a park. And do they get any kind of credit? I I don't know that we've ever done this. It's like air rights in the city.
Yeah, that that's the concept under the proposed regulation, that if you have a park within two hundred and fifty feet, I think it's written now. We can obviously draft it however you want, however you want to do it. But the the concept is a park within very close proximity, as this would be, that you get to use um, you get to use that area to um, towards your development parcel, so to speak. Yes, it it's effectively a transfer, but only up to a point nine.
Okay.
And then the park would have to be of a certain size. That regulation is drafted, but certainly, as as you know, obviously, it's not live at the moment. But but the size of that park is going to have to be something that the commission um, reviews and determines whether that's appropriate and the distance from the parcel, et cetera. But that's exactly right.
We we also needed, we also need to define what a a park is.
Correct. Active, passive, green, et cetera.
There's a, there's a lot of pavement uh, shown in the, in the rendering or diagram.
And why is that? I mean, could it, could it be all green, asking the applicant? I mean, that might be, is there some reason why it's so much pavement?
There's no reason for it. I think it's just an early version of a landscape solution that can be modified.
Okay, great.
Hey, uh, Mr. Barilak, if you would go ahead.
I died. I am struck by the fact, uh, Mr. Gagne, that I that I know you have been following our deliberations and and I thank you very much for actually participating in them, giving us many comments. Um, I'm I'm wondering if proposing a a building of this scope, knowing the direction the commission is going about FAR isn't trying to to sort of spark a very constructive conversation about why we might consider going greater than point seven five. You, are you seeing things in the market? Are you seeing trends or or dynamics that you'd like to share with us as we think about that?
Well, yes. Thank you for that, that comment. Uh, and and we did enjoy working with you, by the way, and giving you comments on your worksheet that you presented during the workshop. So I hope they were useful to you, but I think it does explain our position from the economic point of view. And that has driven us to where we are here today, uh, number one. Number two, to add to that, we feel that the downtown of Greenwich, where it is a regional destination and a shopping, uh, a live workshop and dining environment that is quite vibrant is where uh, increased in density should be enjoyed by the commissioners. And uh, the planning and zoning department should take a hard look and say, where are the places where we can accommodate additional development now? You know, if one goes through the FAR, which it seems to be very important to this commission, and it is to us as well, but we have difference of opinion. We feel it's important in terms of being able to get the marketing and meet the market conditions in the, in the region, and of course, for the town of Greenwich. Uh, and the lower the density is, the more unaffordable it is. And I think we've demonstrated that to you with uh, the economic information that we provided. Now, we can look the other way, uh, and I know that most communities have a desire to come smaller and become smaller and uh, less uh, density. But in this case, where we essentially are a TOD and the state encourages uh, increase in density in the TOD, we're essentially five hundred feet from the train station front doorsteps. We are also in an area where there's a significant amount of infrastructure systems that can support this type of development. Number three, there's a need for work, work housing, workforce housing and affordable housing that the commission is very, very serious in trying to achieve in the downtown. This is an ideal site. There is not another site that is one point four plus acres in this area, and it's not likely that there ever will be. So we also, in addition to that, have an extraordinary pedestrian linkage that's available to us with with the old sheep and cattle path that connects Mason Street to Greenwich Avenue. Why not emphasize that? Why not utilize that amenity for the entire town to use? I mean, I can envision certainly a really well-functioning alleyway that allows people to traverse from one side to the other as opposed to walking around Bruce Park Avenue with all the traffic that comes in in that location. The other element that's important as a land use plan, as a planner that you all are, wouldn't it make sense to increase and really join hand with us to really create a downtown area that's vibrant, that has the housing that's needed? We're not talking about a large density here, but we do need tools. The demand in the marketplace is large units, two thousand square feet. That's been demonstrated by the modern and they've done very well. So if we're going to make units that are fit two thousand square feet, you need FAR. It's not possible. It's not feasible absent that. So if you want to water down the plan, we want to bring a significant building. We want to bring interest in, this is an icon. This is the gateway entrance to Greenwich. So I would think you would want something significant, not just the same old of the mill building that really doesn't speak to the community or the character or the fabric of what we all know Greenwich deserves. So if you work with me to argue over ten percent, but that's what we're talking about, ten percent between one point O and point nine is insignificant. But it's very significant to me because that's dollars per square foot. So if we're going to debate that back.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gagne, we're not.
Both sides.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gagne, um, there's a math error there. We're not talking about ten percent. We're talking about going from point seven five to one point O or more. That's not ten percent. That's.
Well, it is ten percent because we discussed that the park would allow us to go to point nine. Does that change?
Okay, well, I, we're gonna have to. Okay.
Margarita, I suggest we, I suggest we move on.
Yeah, agreed.
This is not a hearing on this matter. This was to provide feedback.
So let's just give the basic feedback. Um, Dennis, did you want to say one more thing? We're going to give the basic feedback and move on. And we also have to get public comment. And again, uh, this has been a, this has been almost an hour. I think that's a bit too long for a pre-app. I'm just saying, uh, the expectation is really a twenty-minute discussion. Mr. Yeski, go ahead.
No, I gave all my feedback. I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your hand is still up. Okay, so just quickly, gentlemen, I I think you've heard. Uh, we have some con- just in terms of the topography, we have concerns about how rocky it is. Uh, that's cliff face that face on on Bruce Park Avenue. We were concerned about how park-like the park would be across the street and weren't really sure we were getting a true amenity, looking at that layout. So at this point, I don't feel the park is a major benefit to the town the way it's laid out. And we have the bad experience from Greenwich Plaza of it not being able to support good trees because it was over a parking garage. So those are concerns. We have not given you any architectural comments and will not do so at this time. Uh, with that, I'm going to turn quickly to the, we've got one hand up from Peter Berg. Uh, Mr. Berg, would you go ahead? Um, hold on a second. You jumped. Okay, Mr. Berg, go ahead and thank you again for joining us. And you should be able to unmute and go ahead right now. There you go. Hello, hello.
So I I just wanted to speak in support of uh, the transfer of this uh, property from from retail to residential.
Yeah, it's not even retail. It's automotive service.
Automotive. Um, this, this uh, this site falls within our census tract number one zero six, which is a census tract that stretches from the railroad tracks up to Greenwich Hospital. The population of Greenwich since nineteen sixty increased by sixteen percent to our current sixty-two and a half thousand or so. But the population of the census tract, the downtown census tract, dropped during the same period by a whopping forty-four percent. And that's based on US Census uh, data. Forty-four percent drop uh, in population. Uh, it's a combination of both households and household size. Um, and I would say if we want a vibrant downtown, we need to have residents living in the downtown.
Absolutely.
Uh, the, the mix of retail uh, on Greenwich Avenue, retail and restaurants uh, is a reflection of the uh, residential in the downtown. As the residential downtown declined, uh, the stores that serve residents went away and were replaced by stores that's, that that truly are a uh, regional attraction that attracts people and cars uh, and requires parking uh, for uh, for people, you know, for all of those people. Uh, to the extent that we can transform the downtown back into a residential uh, neighborhood, uh, the mix of retail and restaurants will change again. So it will reverse the process. And I just point out that uh, this is one of uh, by my count, five or six car dealerships within a block of the uh, railroad station. I'd like to think that they all become residential someday. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Berg. Can you tell me, do you by any chance know the boundary of this census tract and if it includes Millbank Ave?
Uh, it does include. It does. Uh, I believe it does. I'll send you a map.
It just seems odd. It seems odd because Millbank's gone way up in density since the sixties. So I just, off the top of the head, no worries. We'll talk about it offline. I was just curious.
I think it, uh, I think Millbank is a boundary of that census tract.
Okay, and maybe.
You know, you've gotten, you've gotten more units, but there aren't too many people living in those units and some of them are second, second homes.
But they still declare as residency. I'm, I expect, well, maybe not. In any event, it might just be that the east side of Millbank is not. Okay. Um, gentlemen, we're gonna, thank you very much, Peter Berg, for coming. And the, and we're gonna um, we're gonna, we gave you some general guidance. We're uncomfortable with the one point O. We told you about the park. We're concerned about the rock and the blasting that's going to be required in all the underground parking, and I think that's it. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next application, I'm sorry, um, I'm moving the minute down. Uh, our next application is Sharon E. and Frank J. Kinney. Uh, this is to remove a historic overlay at seven thirty-one Lake Avenue. It is again a pre-app and again, I would ask everybody in, I'm going to wait. Oh, we lost Mr. I'm bringing in Mr. Levy again. Oh, he's there. Um, I've got Mr. Hegney. And I've got Mr. Levy. Uh, Mr. Levy fell out. You fell out of the, out of the Hollywood squares, Mr. Levy.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Hegney, if you would go ahead. Um, and again, reminding everybody that the pre-apps are supposed to be twenty-minute overview discussion with with major topics, not an actual application as we just did.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant, try to uh, pick up the pace here a bit for you.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Kenny have owned this property at seven thirty-one Lake Avenue uh, for twenty years. Uh, they have been diligent stewards of the property and have maintained and upgraded it at considerable expense. Uh, they have had a number of interested people and have put the property on the market. Uh, prospective buyers uh, have come and found the property attractive. However, when they see the restrictions that are in place, uh, some are discouraged and others are just scared away. And that's what brings us here with this uh, pre-app uh, with you. Uh, in nineteen ninety-two, our uh, then Governor Lowell Wyker was the owner of this property. And while he was here, he needed a place to stay rather than staying all the time in Hartford. And so he proceeded to a request that the guest cottage and and garage on the property uh, be converted to an apartment with a kitchen. Uh, this was done through the historic overlay zone, uh, which permitted an additional dwelling on the three acres uh, that they have in the RA two zone. Thanks, Pat. If we could just show the aerial, which is the second slide. Thanks. Um, uh, this HO designation was approved July of nineteen ninety-two with a number of conditions. Uh, and those conditions included a preserve exterior features of all buildings, preserve. preserve interior wood paneling located in the dining room and living rooms and corner cupboard in the dining room. Provide for periodic inspection to ensure adequate maintenance. I suppose that would also be for the interior wood paneling. Uh, all trees needed to be preserved to the greatest extent practicable. And if you wanted to remove a tree, you had to come and show, uh, to the satisfaction of the commission, uh, that the tree should be removed. Uh, there were no material changes, uh, to the exterior or that interior paneling without a certificate of appropriate, appropriateness from the Historic District Commission and a special permit from the Planning and Zoning Commission. These conditions were imposed to permit a kitchen to be installed in the guest house to allow it to be used as a dwelling. Uh, these are substantial restrictions that the commission and HDC asked for, and I, I suspect it, I may have had something to do with it. HTC did not quite see this as a necessarily appropriate use of the historic overlay zone. Applicants are now requesting to remove the kitchen and to restore the outbuilding as a guest house and remove the restrictions. With these restrictions in place now, you can't install a pool or add a garage without a certificate of appropriateness and a special permit to, uh, to this commission. Since there is also a requirement to provide vistas and streetscape under this restriction, I suppose they could be required to remove the evergreens that are along Lake Avenue, uh, that have a substantial, uh, protection and, and, uh, uh, and privacy, uh, from Lake Avenue to the house. So the only benefit that was received by, uh, then Governor Wyker, uh, and for this property was to install a kitchen in the guest house. So, uh, the question is, how do you deal with these restrictions and remove them? Turns out there's actually a Supreme Court case on this, and it turns out the Supreme Court case involves, uh, Greenwich. It's Height House, Resis, Planning and Zoning Commission. It was decided in 2001 by the Connecticut Supreme Court. And in that, the court concluded that the commission's consideration of an historic overlay zone application is an administrative rather than a legislative function. So as part of submitting a special permit application, we would be asking you in your administrative capacity to remove the HO designation and the restrictions. My clients are not seeking to have these buildings demolished. Quite to the contrary, they have spent a great deal of time and money over the years upgrading and maintaining the buildings and the property. All they want to be able to do is remove the restrictions so that they can attract a buyer. Uh, I, I would add that, uh, in, in terms of analysis of gee, is the property worth more than the buildings on it? In this particular case, the assessor has substantially valued the buildings over the land. So when I see that, that says to me that the buildings have great value, uh, and not so much, uh, the land. And that tends to lead, uh, to their preservation. And that's what, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Kenny have done, over the last 20 years in maintaining these buildings so that the buildings themselves have, have a real value. So, uh, that, that's what we would like to do is to bring to you an application, uh, for a special permit, uh, to remove these, uh, conditions in the HO designation, uh, so that my clients can proceed with selling the property.
Thank you, Mr. Hegney. Mr. Uh, Ms. Goss, would you like to comment? And somebody's got a second device on. Can you turn it off? Uh, Ms. Goss, would you like to comment on that? You had some comments yesterday.
Uh, yes, Mr. Hegney, there is a, uh, the, the regulation says that the, once a, uh, 6109, the historic overlay regulation states that the, uh, as, as Ms. Alvin pointed out so appropriately yesterday, that the, um, the buildings are to be, uh, maintained in perpetuity. And then when I was looking at the declaration of restrictions, uh, at the time, uh, on this property, the restrictions say that the, uh, the, uh, the declaration says that the restrictions run with the land and they will be binding on any future owners of the land, that paragraph eight. So how do you propose to, uh, deal with thi- this? It was clear that the intent of the HO is that it, um, it, that the restrictions run and the HO runs in perpetuity. So how do we, how do you propose we deal with this?
Uh, the, uh, restrictions also on page nine talk about how these can be modified.
Page nine of the declarat- of the declaration of restrictions?
Yes.
Yes, it may be modified, Ms. Hegney, but permanent is not something one would expect to.
You know, when, when I look at, at this, uh, it, it was, no exterior changes, uh, were proposed in 1992. Uh, it was just to install a kitchen so that a guest house could be used, uh, as dwelling. And, uh, and to have, uh, such onerous restrictions on this now for such a minor benefit, uh, I think is, uh, is something that the commission can consider and that it can be done through a special permit. I, I don't think that even though it says it's in perpetuity, uh, that, that you then give up your right to eliminate these restrictions and to free the property to be used in a more appropriate fashion.
So I believe, Mr. Hegney, that your law clerk attended the briefing yesterday and, um, would have advised you that we turned the tables on the question and we asked, why would the town even have an HO regulation if it could be temporary in nature and not set to preserve buildings in perpetuity? Why would we even have that regulation? And that if we were to go ahead with a special permit, we might as well just remove the regulation from the books. Uh, Mr. Lowe, before Mr. Hegney answers, since you have your hand up.
Yeah. You want me to speak or Mr. Hegney?
No, I, you go ahead. Mr. Hegney's waiting for you to speak.
Um, I, uh, it's not clear to me at all that the, um, commission in 1992, considered that additional kitchen and the designation of an HO a minor benefit. Um, indeed, I think they determined that the structures on the site, and I'm quoting, have historic and aesthetic significance, which represents and reflects elements of the town of Greenwich's cultural, social, economic, political and architectural history, and therefore are worthy of enhancement, maintenance, permanent protection and preservation. And I would echo, uh, Ms. Goss's, uh, alluding to how all the terms and provisions and covenants shall run with the premises as a binding servitude and obligation in perpetuity. And so, uh, when the, when the applicant purchased the, this property and, and these dwellings, they knew exactly, um, what these provisions were. And you, by telling us that the, that the current owner has no intention of demolishing the buildings, at the same time, you're telling us they're trying to sell the house and they can sell it more easily if these restrictions are removed. That gives no assurance to anyone that someone won't come in and, and blow the place up.
Unfortunately, uh, my clients were not aware of these restrictions at the time that they purchased the property and perhaps didn't receive the, the kind of counsel, uh, that.
That you might be. Yes, that's unfortunate. They didn't have a good lawyer, a good attorney like you, and that's very unfortunate, but we cannot address that.
Um, Madam Chair, I wonder, it's a strange thing about the interior because that's not usually what, what gets restricted.
I understand that.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just gonna ask, I wonder if there's an opportunity, Mr. Hegney, to talk to the Historic District Commission about removing the interior restrictions. That might be helpful.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Katie has a great suggestion. Any, um, if the, the interior has not been in the scope of an HO and that would be acceptable and you wouldn't even require us, I mean, you don't have to come back to us. That's interior work, but.
That, that is, that is a concern because it does also say in the decision that the, uh, the town has the right to go in and inspect. And I.
So you would go to HTC.
discourage someone from doing this with somebody knocking on their door and say, we want to see your dining room.
So Katie's suggestion is excellent. Why don't you go to the HTC, um, and ask that they remove the conditions on the interior. However, I'm not getting any kind of feeling of support from the commission on your proposal to come in for a special permit. As you know, this is non-binding from us to give you that, but I'm not getting anything, I'm not getting anything positive.
I'm not getting a warm and fuzzy feeling either.
No, I would not. But it will be supportive about removing the interior restrictions. I think that's an extraordinarily good idea. We should have thought of it ourselves, but that's why we have Katie. Um, and so, uh, if you would do that, but I'm not, I don't think we're going to hear anybody because really, Mr. Hegney, you're, you're saying to us that the HOs really have no validity. That they're only for as long as an applicant is willing, as, as an owner is willing to have them, and that's not the idea.
I am saying that, uh, under Connecticut law, you're acting in an administrative capacity. You, I don't think have the ability to make this in perpetuity regardless of what the documents say. And that it is not rezoned. It is merely, uh, a special permit action that is done on, and through an administrative, uh, approach and.
And that's no problem.
Certainly, that gives you the ability, uh, to revise this.
Absolutely. But I think what, what we're saying to you is that if we were to revise this, we would essentially destroy our HO regulation because it would no longer have any kind of impact because it would mean that anybody could remove their HO at any point in time after having obtained it. And that is not the intent. Your intent is historic preservation. I, I'm very sorry that your clients weren't aware that it existed, but the whole point of an HO is preservation. And I would think that that will stand up in court, that the effort to preserve. So if you'd like to pursue that route, um, that's your option, of course, but you're not getting, you're not getting support from the commission on wanting to act in an administrative capacity on this.
So, uh, the, the interior, uh, wood panels were one of the restrictions. Uh, there were some others in terms of not being able to remove any trees or providing an open streetscape. Would those also be other conditions that the commission would consider modifying as part of considering this?
I would point you to a couple of recent applications that, uh, Katie can give you that the commission has emphasized that an HO is also, and the language is in the regulations, is also dependent on the setting in which the property is. So to the extent you're also preserving the setting, could you argue that you have a bad tree? Of course you could, but the idea is to preserve the, the historic natural landscaping as well. And we, um, Dennis, do you remember, Mr. Yeski, uh, there was an application on which you felt very strongly about that?
Yes.
It's the application about, uh, Second Congregational Church and that Italian building. And, and basically, uh, we wanted to make sure that they couldn't touch anything on the property and that they understood.
Coffee for good. It was when we did Coffee for Good and it was in the decision on Coffee for Good that they would preserve the setting of the site.
The entire site. But can, can they?
Call that decision.
I figured you would. So, and then you could also look at the decision. I always remember, forget the name of the street, the one that was going to put a second building. Um, and, uh, again, we said. Yeah, Calhoun. Thank you for who remembered. Um, Calhoun Drive was another decision that, uh, was based on the same concepts. Because we're applying the HO pretty consistently, conceptually, or at least we're making every effort. So there you are. You are not getting, as you said, a lot of warm fuzzy from us.
Understood. We'll, we'll have to review, oh, the restrictions, see what, uh, potential owners of this property would find acceptable and who wouldn't, and, um, and return to you.
And we're happy, we're happy to, to support you on the interior in any way you'd like. If that's feasible, I guess Katie, we can do that, right? Okay. So thank you very much, Mr. Hegney, and I'm sorry that the answer was what it is, but it is.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, our next application is the Hayden Reich Family Trust at 28 Meeting House Road. This is a pre-app for an 150,000 cube cubic foot building, which is thus over volume because of a pool house. And, uh, is the applicant ready to proceed?
I believe it's Mr. Brower, Madam Chair.
Mr. Brower. Um, not seeing him. Mr. Brower, would you raise your hand? Uh, I got him. Help people to raise their hand. Okay, there's Mr. Brower's on his way in. Mr. Brower, hello. Um, before you, before you start, Mr. Brower, I don't know if you were at the briefing yesterday. Uh, Mr. McRae, Mr. McRae had a couple of numbers questions for you, and then, um, I have one overall comment. And then I think you could basically go on your way unless someone's thought of something overnight.
Uh, Madam Chair, I believe that Mr. Brower had submitted some information that, uh, resolved issues of the numbers that I were, was questioning.
Okay, good. So you're offset on that. And the only other comment that we had is that, uh, the concern we had with another application recently that, that came in for a similar situation, we just asked them to be, to try to be environmentally sensitive and in when they consider the landscaping and the impact as, as the foot, as the footprint grows and the, the amount of disturbance grows to attempt to be more environmentally sensitive. And I know you'll be great at counseling your clients as such, so, um, as far as we know, you're good to go on filing for the application. I believe you already have, right?
No, we were, um, waiting to.
Okay.
Uh, to hear what that, uh, time period would be, uh, in order to be able to file. We're prepared to submit.
Okay, great. So we'll see you when we see you.
Yes, thank you. And, uh.
See how you lucked out when we started running late?
I think we stayed under our 20 minutes.
Yeah, I think you did. Thank you.
Thank you. See you soon.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
I sort of made that point really clear. Okay, so the next one, and this I know is going to stay under 20 minutes. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission's affordable housing. No?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. You're right. I apologize. I'm going, I'm moving it to, you're.
You're right. I goof lots too. Um, I goof more than you guys do. The Planning and Zoning Commission, um, has an Affordable Housing Task Force that's proposed a trust of, that the town make a housing trust. Uh, we presented the basic ideas to the Land Use and Legislative and Rules Committee last night. Uh, the reactions seemed generally favorable. You all have a copy of the current draft of the trust in your material. We've, we did a, for those of you that didn't attend the meeting, uh, Katie can circulate the quick little, um, cheat sheet that we did. Uh, we'll, we'll post it on the town website. Uh, we are in fact going to have a webpage for the trust uh, that has, uh, an introduction on why we're having the trust. And then, uh, Mr. Barilak is kindly developing some FAQs on the trust. So unless there's somebody in the public that wishes to comment on the trust concept, I think we can just say we've talked, it's out there. We've thrown it out. Y'all have, have an opportunity to review the doc, document and, um, we can move on.
And it, just quickly, the, the idea behind it would be to get money in so that we can put money out to provide gap financing, just in a nutshell, for, for affordable housing.
And yep. And, um, Dennis, you look like you want to say something. No. Okay. All right. Anybody else? I mean, you all have the draft. Uh, we're getting legal review on the draft on Thursday, so it'll be subject to significant change um, because of legal things. And, uh, does anybody in the public wish to speak about the Affordable Housing Trust? Does anybody have a question? No. Okay. All right. So with that, we'll move on. The next, now we have a, a real application. It's Patricia Galego Barracat at 675 Steamboat Road in the R. It's Patricia Galego Barrack at six seventy five Steamboat Road in the R six and Coastal Overlay Zones. And it is Mr. Hegney, who is now becoming an attorney. No longer a legal clerk.
It's nice to be promoted. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm joined this evening, or I'm sorry, John Hegney, for the record, for the applicant, Patricia Barracat. We're looking to to build a new home at six seventy five Steamboat Road. I am joined in the audience this evening by our architect, Paul Harris from Cole Harris Architects.
Mr. Harris, would you raise your hand?
Madam Chair.
I got him.
Okay.
Oh, oh, you don't need him?
I'm happy to bring them up. We're here to field any questions that the commission may have regarding the project. Our engineer, Tom Nelson from Accord Engineering, our our surveyor, Mike Finkbiner from Earth Image, and our landscape architect, Kate Throckmorton, from Environmental Land Solutions.
Okay.
Um, I'm sure the commission is very familiar with the project based on the comments that we received at the briefing yesterday. I will say that this project is reliant on a Clomer F application to FEMA. We are looking to relocate the A E flood zone line on the property to ensure that the proposed building falls outside of the flood zone. This would exempt us from the town's requirements under B Z R six dash one thirty nine one for building for structures in the flood zone. We've been assured by our coastal engineers at Race Coastal Engineering, who just responded to questions from FEMA last week that we will be getting the Clomer approval that we're seeking. In particular, as part of the revisions requested by FEMA, they asked that we push the the line landward from the regrading and rear retaining walls that we have at the back of the property to ensure there's no confusion as to where the flood line will lay. Apparently, on other projects, they've had confusion as to whether the the line is at the top or bottom of the wall.
That's actually, yeah. And one of the things we were asking yesterday is and in the material you supplied us, we didn't see clearly where the X would the X line X zone would end, and we would like to see that see clearly where you're laying it out. You you also heard us talk about the fact that anything, any approval would and deep has confirmed that has also said that that you would be approved, would be contingent on the approval of your Clomar. The you I we raised a concern yesterday in noting that the Clomar F and sewer actually caught that, not us. And the Clomar F has it marked that you're all slab on grade and you're not slab on grade completely, and you probably need to refile. The Harbor Management Commission has written in that they have no comments. The Conservation Commission would like you to do more of the coastal buffer planting and more work to be consistent with our new regulation in that regard. I believe you could accommodate that.
We will work with the Conservation Director upon her return to the office next week.
Yeah.
I will say we are dealing with a new regulation here on the coastal buffer. Six one eleven D six. I understand, and I can appreciate certainly an echo what Mr. Yeski has said on multiple occasions that focusing on regulation changes rather than the actual applications is the meat and potatoes of what the commission likes to do. I will say that.
I don't remember you ever saying that, Mr. Yeski.
I'm quoting very, very, very liberally. I apologize for the.
He doesn't like to work on regular.
No, I'm big pictures. Detail regulations drive me crazy, but I I've got.
Planning, planning. He's all about.
He would write a P O C D every year. That's what Dennis would do. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was thinking about suggesting that we start on the new P. Katie, what do you say? We go start another P O C D?
Are we ready to start it already? Okay, so, Mr. Hegney, go ahead.
I will say that, you know, we do think that the plan that we've submitted does honor the the regulation. You know, we're we're moving a significant amount of gravel area and a flagstone patio from the rear that is existing on site. The sea wall that we're dealing with here is at elevation eleven. The Smith Cove starts at elevation two. So there's a significant separation between the planted area that we're proposing and the coastal resources in Smith Cove. These are items that the commission said that they would recognize when they pass the regulation, taking into account the longstanding use of the property and the relation of the planted area to the coastal resources. And and we would ask when we do meet with the the Conservation Director, and hopefully, when we return to the commission, that those factors are taken into account. This property was built in eighteen seventy five. The the sea wall is hand laid without mortar. All of this area of town has been developed for a very, very long time, and we would hate to make significant departures from what we've had.
So, Mr. Hegney, even though we're we purposely wrote it so that there would be flexibility to reflect historic uses, et cetera. Whatever an applicant can give, and this is what we're looking for, that is more sustainable and more supportive of the local fauna and more supportive of the of the sensitivity of the sound is deeply appreciated. And that's so there's a minimum that we're looking to get. And the more an applicant is willing to do, we realize they want to have access to their deck. We realize they want to enjoy their property. But at the same time, we really want to see a move towards enhanced sustainability. You also have outstanding. So if you just think about that, have your client think about that and see what you could do. You have an excellent landscape architect. I'm sure you can come up with a good compromise. You've got some issues to address with the sewer department as well.
Our architect has anticipated and had similar thoughts to Mr. Feminella. So we do have a responses forum to ensure that we're properly guarding the sewer line and preventing any backflow sewer issues.
And you've got that agreement that you need to provide as well because of the you're moving a line.
There is a longstanding or a historical drain pipe that drains Steamboat Road into the Smith Cove. We'll be relocating that, and we'll be offering the town formal rights as part of the agreement to relocate.
So you've got some i's to dot and t's to cross, and then you should be in good shape. I believe that, you know, that our precedent has been that we would we would be willing to make an approval contingent. And as I understand it, you wish to have the doc excluded at this point in time until you have progressed that with deep.
We would ask that it be included to prevent the need for a future application.
Okay, and then we would make that contingent as well. Okay. Does anybody else on the commission have comments? No. Okay, does anybody? We have a member of the public who wishes to speak. Why am I not seeing where this hand is?
Mrs. Allen, while we're waiting for that.
He wants to talk. Oh, okay. Go ahead. No, I does anybody from the public wish to speak? Mr. Harris, you're with the team, so unless, do you want to add a comment now?
I have nothing to add to what.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Mr. McRae, if you would go ahead.
Mr. Hegney, could you provide some schedule on the Clomar? Are you like a week out or a month out?
Well, he has to revise the application.
We we did just resubmit to FEMA. We did get their response within forty five days. We would expect to to receive favorable response within that timeframe, possibly sooner. But we did just file our updated materials with them on Friday.
Last Friday. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hegney.
All righty. Does anybody for? Nope, we asked. There is no publics to comment. Nobody from the commission wishes to comment. So with that, Mr. Hegney will see you when you see you, when we see you, but I'm assuming that you will wait until you have some sort of indication on the Clomar. And that you willing.
Madam Chair, the the commission has in the past approved.
I know. I believe I sadly was here and protesting the fact that we do that. So I'm quite aware that we have in the past.
A zoning permit sign off application on Mr. LaRose's bookshelf from two thousand fifteen to two thousand seventeen. While we waited for that Clomar up then to Windrose Way, and this one will be much, much faster.
Okay, great. So whenever you're ready. And you've got everything set and oh, that they just.
Actually, Mrs. I'm a quick question for Mr. Hegney. Just one more one question. Will you will you receive anything from FEMA about the Clomar that has positive feedback or that you're approved and they're just pending paperwork?
When we filed the new map with P N C that the commission has asked for, we'll also include our response package. So you can see how we've responded to FEMA's needs and FEMA's questions. And you'll get an understanding that we believe that will be approved shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Hegney. Are we are ready to open the public hearing, Mr. Vazili? Oh. And with that, Katie, this is over to you. We have application number three, Planning and Zoning Staff. This is for a text amendment for section six fourteen for the procedure for site plan applications. Katie.
I thank you. Yes, this is this is in reaction to comments we've received from the public that the requirement for all special permits to go before the commission with a pre application before they submit their their final application is is unnecessary and, in fact, onerous for people that are submitting for homes that are over one hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet in volume. So this would be a specific exemption of that requirement for those types of applications. And it's that simple.
Any comment from the commission? I think the only thing we asked you yesterday was whether we would consider broadening that language at some point so that staff or the commission can waive a pre app when it's really de minimis. Or yeah, anything else that you see that is not significant enough to really spend the time on a pre app.
But yeah, and I think that's something we can definitely explore. I would suggest if it's if it's okay with the commission that you move forward with this, and then we can explore that in the future. And I only say that because I am concerned about the language that we would that we would put together for that. I think it would need some more time than just saying something like, you know, we want to have it cut and dry. We don't want there to be too much subjectivity there. So I think that might take a bit more time.
We can burn that bridge if we're standing on it.
Right. So we can, we can, we'll get there when we get there. So we can do that later. And so we, does anybody object to closing that application? Please raise your hand if you object.
Public comment, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay. I told you I goof more than other people. Okay, any public comment on that? No. Okay. May we close the application? Does anybody object to closing it? Please raise your hand. The application is closed. With that, back to Katie again. Application number, oops. Yes. Application number four, which is another text amendment, and this is to do section six five. Katie, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. This is a direct result of the Plan of Conservation and Development. We were ahead of our time when we wrote the plan and recognized that we did want people to have more of an opportunity to work from their homes. Little did we know, we had a global pandemic on our hands in the few months after we that plan receipt was adopted. So this this is effectively to allow home office, which is a well established regulation, has been on the books for many years, but only permits home office within within single family residences or two family residences. And this proposed regulation would allow that same that same opportunity to be applied to multifamily homes that is defined as three family or more. So as I said, this is direct, direct response to an objective that was listed in the plan, and I think the timing is is perfect considering the the desire and necessity, actually, at this point, for people to be to be working from home.
And full credit to Mr. Yeski for being the one who insisted when we wrote the P O C D that we add that to the P O C D. Does anybody on the commission have any comments on this application? Oh, does anybody from the up up? No. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this application? No comments from the pub public. I had a feeling we might be going too late. There was there was somebody who was very interested in this. Okay, we will then, if anybody, if nobody has any objections, we will close this application. Please raise your hand if you object to closing it. All righty. Our next application is Kaliza eleven L L C. And it is at eleven Round Hill Club Road. We it's a four hundred and ninety one square foot pool house addition. And just to give you a heads up, I'm going to suggest that we take a break after we do this and return and do the next items altogether afterwards. So.
Second.
Good. Okay, so we'll get through this one, and then before we get to Putnam, Mr. Hasland.
Good evening.
Chip Haslam for the applicant. And I appreciate your waiting until after my matter to take the break, Madam Chair. This is an application.
Okay, let's take a break now.
As you've any can, this is an application for four hundred and ninety one square foot pool house on property in Round Hill Club Road. It's required to come before you because the existing property, your existing house is over one hundred fifty thousand cubic feet. As you can see, this is a fairly marginal addition. The actual F A R, which is permitted on the property, is eleven thousand nine hundred and five square feet. What will result be an F A R of ten thousand six hundred and ten square feet. There was a bit of a discrepancy between the architects' plans and the engineers' plans on some of the numbers, and I thank your staff member, Jacqueline Pruitt, for bringing that to our attention, and we were able to resolve that on on Thursday night. Also, we received comments from the Conservation Commission that they were requesting certain plantings to take place in considerations of rain gardens, et cetera. We submitted a landscape plan in response to those comments. And I think the most recent memo you see from conservation was that they were satisfied with what we'd done with those those plantings. So I think those are the only issues, and I'd ask that the commission consider the application and hopefully approve it.
Does anybody in the commission have any comments? We never do that. Yes, Mr. Hasland, Mr. McRae, you had a comment yesterday, and that's I'm sort of looking at you to see if you do.
I know, actually, I believe that Mr. Hasland corrected everything on this. There were some discrepancies between, I think, engineering drawings with the one square footage and architectural drawings with another, but I believe that's been resolved and talking to Miss Mrs. Pruitt yesterday, I think that any of those issues would be resolved as well.
I think they have. Thank you.
No other comments from the commission? And do I have any comments from the public? Please raise your virtual hand if you were in the public and have a comment on this application. No. Okay. Please raise your hand on the panel if you have any objection to closing this application. Okay, so this application is hereby closed.
Thank you.
And now we have a very important vote to take ten or fifteen minutes, you guys.
Your call fifteen?
Lowe's for fifteen. Anybody else? Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeski seconds for fifteen, and the motion carries without a vote. So it is seven eleven, and it will, in theory, reconvene at seven twenty six.
You got it. I'm not on the next item, so.
Okay, we'll see you when we see you. Then if you want to step away, that's fine. Mr. Low is seated for you.
Yes, so.
But I would love to have you stay and comment. Why don't you stay?
I will. I will be here. Just.
Yeah.
I'm going to turn my screen off and and I'll be here. We closed a few items, and that's all we did. So there's not no other, no other items or actions that we're taking.
We're going to vote. Well, you're going to have to vote on the you're going to have to come back and vote, but I we can call you and ask you to come back and vote. Well, you're going to have to vote on.
Text me.
Yes.
In case I'm.
Okay, we'll call you and text you and ask you to come back. We've got three applications on which we're going to vote at the end of the meeting. And then. And then, and we'd love to have your comments on West Putnam because you've been here for the duration.
Okay.
So if you want to take a longer break and just step in at some point and just give some comments, that would be fine.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Patrick, are you gonna make one of your cute signs now? Yeah, you love those signs. Today we didn't even have postponements. They will start promptly at five. All right. I can't hear you because you're muted, so I'm gonna go eat.
Small pleasures. I only get so many, Madam Chair.